Cavanaugh. Somebody needs to mute. Well, good. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Commissioner James Kavanaugh, Chair of the Community Services Committee of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, and we are here today to discuss the Douglas County Visitors Fund Grant Cycle. The Visitors Improvement Fund grant applications and procedures will be discussed, so that folks who want to participate in this this year will have plenty of notice on how to do that. We have a plethora of resources here. Starting on my left is County Clerk Dan Esch and Commissioner Brian Fahey, Visitors Committee Visitor Improvement Committee founding member, Dick Davis.
I'm not dead yet.
We're bringing the band back together, Dave.
Visitors Committee Chairman Todd Simon and Douglas County's Board Chairman Roger Garcia. We also have the Executive Director of the Omaha Tourist Authority.
Omaha Convention and Visitors.
Sit corrected.
Visit Omaha is what we call it.
Visit Omaha.
Very easy peasy, right?
Deb Ward.
And also Kristi is on Zoom. Kristi Jakella, who's on the.
Oh, yeah.
She's also a committee member.
We have on the Zoom, which is something that we've employed so that people don't have to come out and drive all the way downtown. One of our committee members, and Kristi, thank you for joining us. We are hopefully going to get through this in one hour. And Kristi Jakella, I think, are you the newest member, Kristi, of the committee?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we have the Alpha and the Omega of the committee. Thanks for joining us.
We have the Open Meetings Act on the wall.
Yes, we have a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the back wall for your inspection. We're going to try to abide by this agenda. If you haven't signed in before you leave, could you please sign in? So that we have an accurate record. These committee hearings are recorded and transcribed, and we will proceed along the agenda in this fashion. We have a PowerPoint prepared by our staff, Catherine Hall, who will kind of walk us through an overview of the Visitors Improvement Fund and the grant cycle attached to that. And we will go from there to comments from the committee members and commissioners. Last week, the Visitors Improvement Committee met, and I'd ask for Todd Simon to give us a brief overview as kind of an intro on what happened at that committee meeting.
Thanks, Commissioner. So we met, every year prior to actually kicking up the process, we meet to review a few things. We look at how the process went last year. We look at, and we spent a fair amount of time reviewing the application for this year. We had robust discussion about that and landed in a really good place. So we're ready to talk about the Visitor Improvement Fund today, and we'll be opening for applications. What are we anticipating?
By March 17th.
Okay, we'll be opening for applications by March 17th. They'll be about a month, a little bit more than a month.
Six weeks.
Yeah, about six weeks for prospective grantees to submit their applications. So I can go.
If you guys want to go through this.
Unless somebody has any other questions, let's go.
I think we.
So just, I'm going to give a very quick overview and then throw it to Catherine to take us through the rest of the slides. There aren't very many of them. So the first one is just what the Douglas County Visitor Improvement Fund is. The funds are used to improve the visitor attractions facilities in Douglas County, and the goals include making the county an attractive destination, driving economic impact, and enriching the lives of the citizens of Douglas County. And there is a seven-member Visitor Improvement Fund Committee that serves as an advisory committee to the Board of Commissioners in administering the Visitor Improvement Fund. And those committee members are, as Commissioner Kavanaugh already introduced, Dick Davis, Chris Johnson, Kristi Jakella, who is on the Zoom call, Mike Leahy, Emilia Larder, Jay Lund serves as our Vice Chair, and I am honored to be your Chair. Now I'll pass it over to Catherine to take us through the cycle.
Catherine Hall, the Assistant County Administrator, and to those of you who are prior applicants or recipients, I've probably communicated quite a bit. And so this is kind of an overview of what the committee was recommending for this upcoming grant cycle. This year, our finance team has advised that $5 million are available for grant awards. This is the same as was available last year, and which many of you recall is the highest amount that's ever been available in the pot for allocation. So that's great news. As Ted mentioned, we're aiming to get the application open by March 17th, and that's pending the approval of the application by the Board of Commissioners next week. So all of you might have received a draft application handout. That's sort of our draft state. That'll be pending approval by the board, and then the official document will be posted on Douglas County's website as soon as it's available. And to all current recipients or anyone else who's reached out to me to express interest, I'll also distribute it by email. The application will then be due at 3:00 PM on April 25th. So as Ted mentioned, that should be open for about six weeks. The Visitors Committee will then collect those applications and review them, and then meet two to three times in May to make recommendations for those award. We'll target getting those recommendations to the Board of Commissioners in June for the ultimate approval, and then all applicants will receive notice likely in July, the status of their application. And these are the, you know, the Visitor Improvement Fund originates from some statutory guidance from Nebraska Visitors Act, and so the guidance provides that eligible applicants are nonprofits or publicly owned visitor attractions, and they can apply for the purposes outlined in the slideshow. That's great, Sharon. Which are expanding and improving facilities at any visitor attraction, acquiring or expanding exhibits for an existing visitor attraction, constructing visitor attractions, and planning or developing such expansions, improvements, construction. So we've, since 2009, more than $50 million have been invested in Douglas County's visitor attractions. So we mentioned this year, the fund balance available for allocation is $5 million. And that's up from $2.5 million in 2009. So it's been a huge increase in the amount that's been available for allocation, and we can attribute that to the increase in hotel and motel revenue, which is a good sign, too, that the funds are having a positive impact in improving visitor attractions and drawing visitors from outside Douglas County. And I think this, since at least 2008, the Douglas County Visitors Committee evaluates applications within four different category types: countywide signature lifestyle and arts attractions, sports, and national awareness, festivals, and ethnic and community diversity. And as you can imagine, there's just such a broad range of applicants from throughout the county with a variety of different events and types and sizes, and so this just sort of helps the committee organize like events and activities for discussion purposes. Last year, the Douglas County made 77 grant awards totaling just shy of $5 million. And again, speaking to the variety and range of applicants and recipients, the individual awards ranged from just over $4,000 to $300,000. The distribution across the categories in the last cycle is as displayed in the pie chart here in this slide. A large proportion of the awards go to the countywide signature lifestyle and arts attractions. But there's, over time, you can see that the distribution across categories is fairly proportioned over time, and it's also proportionate to the distribution of requests across the categories. As you can see, the low years there, of course, following the pandemic when the revenue was impacted by fewer hotel stays and more travel. And then here's your County Board of Commissioners, who will ultimately be approving award recommendations from the Visitors Committee in June. And then that's the extent of what I've got to say, but open any questions if anyone else.
Thanks, Catherine.
So I think the takeaway good news is we're at $5 million per annum, and I think at the low point during COVID in 2020, 2021, what was it?
1.8, I think.
Yeah, it was.
So we've more than made up for the COVID impact on the fund. And, you know, it's impressive that over the course of the life of this program, we've been able to pump $52 million into the community because there's a multiplier effect on all of that jobs and restaurant sales and quality of life. So, you know, it makes a difference what we do here in terms of making this the best community that it can be. Partner in all of this has been Visit Omaha, and we're fortunate enough to have the Executive Director, Deb Ward, with us today. Deb, I was just wondering if you could maybe jump in because this has been a very productive partnership, and to give us a view how, what you do and what this committee does relate to each other.
We really depend on what this committee does because you help improve the product that we sell. So you guys help establish what the product is. We then sell and promote it. So what you guys do impacts what we do.
And can I just make a comment, which is also that Visit Omaha does have resources available to help, don't you have, to help applicants figure out like how many visitors they have?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, not money resources, but, but, but one of the, you know, and I think, and I think this will, for those of you who participate in the process and those of us who have evaluated applications, you know, one of the things that we do look at is the impact of the event or attraction on Douglas County and visiting to Douglas County. And Visit Omaha has some tools and some ability to help, particularly if you're a brand new or only a couple of year old project, they can help fill in some of the blanks, and that will help the committee have more guidance on how to address the application. So we encourage you to interface with Visit Omaha as you move through the application process, if that's appropriate for you. Is that, is that okay, Deb?
That's awesome. We love that. We love to help applicants. We love to help applicants learn what tourism really is. And from our perspective, it's getting those people who live out of town, come to the city, deposit their money with us, and then leave. So.
Maybe they'll stay.
Perfect guess. Deb, could you, for the record, and the folks that are zooming in and everybody else, give us a one-stop-shop number to call and email to contact you?
Sure, I think email's the best, and it's her email. And I think we can, Catherine, we'll give it to you. It's jgoodwin, goodwin, I know Goodman. I act like I don't know you for the last 20 years. jgoodwin@visitomaha.com. Where's the letter J? J. Yes, exactly, not J. Yeah, and we'll be happy to help you. We'll need some information from you, but then we can kind of provide you some information about maybe what your event is worth and economic impact details, and then how many people you actually see from out of town. Sometimes these people aren't charged, sometimes the events aren't charging admissions, so they don't know. We can help with that.
Great. You do some promotion kind of things, too, don't you?
A little bit, yeah. That's what we do. So when, and maybe everybody, this is a quick lesson, but 5% lodging tax is charged on every hotel room in Douglas County. 1% goes to the state, 4% comes to Douglas County. Of that 4%, we get 2%. You guys keep 2% to help improve the destination. We get the 2% to sell and promote it.
And I've seen you, when we've had new projects, et cetera, communicate and distribute that, that new information so people will know, I mean.
Absolutely, that's what we do. So whatever's happening in the city, we want to get that, that message out to potential visitors. So we have a website. We have a phenomenal social media network. We do commercials in cities, you know, five cities.
Right.
Outside, so.
I think that's really important, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was great. Thanks, Deb. Just to give folks some of the kinds of programs, from the large to the small, we do a $225,000 grant to Cinco de Mayo this year for their great parade and festival in South Omaha where I grew up, and it is something to see, worth coming for, and draws, I don't know what the headcount is, it's got to be 100,000 people. It's huge. College World Series, of course, is another signature event here in town, and this show, we gave a College World Series a $40,000 grant. Well worth it. I mean, probably in terms of heads and beds, one of the biggest, if not the biggest, events that we, that we have. We have, this very weekend, Irish Charities of Nebraska, aka the Ancient Order of Hibernians, will have the, I believe it's 152nd Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade Downtown in the Old Market, Saturday at 11:00 AM, and it's free of charge. It's a great show, representing our ethnic diversity, and hopefully the weather will cooperate and everybody will come out. We do $250,000, the Omaha Symphony, $190,000 to the Rose Theater. We do $4,100 to Nebraska Story Arts. We do Opera Omaha, $125,000. We do the Omaha Film Festival, $40,000. And this year, the Omaha Irish Cultural Center received a grant to put on a film festival here of Irish first released films, which we'll show this weekend, and they received $15,000. Those will show Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at College of St. Mary and the Benson Theater. On and on and on, Neil Woods Nature Reserve, the Film Streams, new release programming, EAA Sports Complex, El Museo Latino, the Durham Museum, Douglas County Historical Society, City of Ralston. It touches all parts of our community, all parts of the county, and we intentionally kind of focus on spreading the joy as much as possible. And these folks on the committee who are experienced in this spent a ton of time volunteering their efforts to make sure that we get as wide a spread of our resources as possible to help as many events in the community enrich all of our lives. And I got to say thank you, Todd and Dick, and your committee members, for the efforts that you've done over the years, and we've all been well-served and look forward to this year again, you guys doing all of the work and us reaping all of the benefits. So, thanks very much.
That's how it works.
We're lucky enough to have a couple of my colleagues on the county board, and I'd just like to open up our Q and A session with turning it over to our Chairman, Roger Garcia. Roger?
Appreciate it. Commissioner Kavanaugh, I just want to echo briefly your sentiment towards the committee members. I know it may seem like fun and easy to hand out money, but it's actually really, really difficult, especially when you have an abundance of applicants. I know you awarded about 77. I would imagine you probably had more applicants than that to go through. So we're talking about seven individuals who actually read every application, that has to score the application, and, you know, then they debate the applications to allocate funding, and there's no perfect science to it. There's always going to be, you know, some, some give and take, so to speak, but I'm really grateful that the committee members really step up as community volunteers to do this work. So my appreciation as well to the committee members that are here on Zoom and were not present. Thank you.
Thank you. And our newest member on Douglas County Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Brian Fahey.
Thanks, glad to be here. Just want to echo the gratitude for the committee members for all the hard work and for everyone else who took the time to be here on Zoom and in person for all the work everyone does in bringing, drawing attraction and interest to Douglas County and also just enriching the lives of everyone in the county. So thank you.
So we've heard from the committee members. I don't know if you guys have anything else that you'd like to add, and we'll throw it open to the folks here. Good?
Yeah.
All right. We intentionally tried to get the word out to as many people as possible so that we could draw a crowd. It looks like we've succeeded. I'm going to go to the folks in the room first, and then, time permitting, we'll get to the folks on Zoom. Try to be a little sensitive to the time constraints. We're at 1:52. This committee hearing will wrap up at 2:00 PM, so be aware of that. We, I'm sorry, 2:30. 1:30, 1:30. Sorry. This is an hour-long committee here. Let me put it that way. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I know that there are folks here who are grant recipients currently in this cycle, and maybe we'll start with them and then go to whoever has, you know, just a public interest in the work that we're doing here. Anybody from the grant recipient point of view? And please give your name and organization.
My name is Tim Launergan, and with the Ancient Order of the Hibernians, we received a gracious grant last year to put on, continue to put on the parade, and we are now in the midst, in two days, we'll be having the parade, and that money is being very well spent. We will have, I was going to talk to Deb, it's probably over 8,000. If it's a nice day, we can have over 10,000 people downtown, and if it's a crummy day, it's five. One thing we can't predict is the weather, but it's the first parade of the season. It's a very ethnic parade. Everybody's invited to be in the parade. We encourage everybody in the city to come out, enjoy, and celebrate Irish Culture Month. I hope that you'll get earlier or later today. So we are very grateful. We'll be applying for another grant next year as well.
Full disclosure, I'm Irish. Douglas County Board, in their last meeting, passed a resolution declaring March 2025 as Irish Heritage Month, and so the parade is a great kickoff for that celebration. It's also the oldest parade in Omaha. Started 152 years ago and held every year regardless of the weather, and it's a credit to our community that we have this diverse selection of different folks from different places and different backgrounds, all participating, working together to make this a better place.
And just to end, the money that we got enabled us to, the money we raised from the parade, then we turn it back and give back to the homeless, the people less fortunate in the city of Omaha. And typically, we donate back about $10,000 to $15,000 in proceeds to places like Sea of Francis House, Heartland Ministries, to feed the people. The reason we do that, the Irish came hungry, and we feel the need to feed the people of Omaha still today.
Well, thanks, Tim.
Lindsay, Omaha Sports Commission, other than dates listed within here, are there any major changes that those of us who have gone through the grant process before need to be aware of?
We're asking for a little bit more expanded narrative about, about your project, and that's pretty much it, isn't it?
Yeah, I think we're a little bit more specific in our connection to, to what we've, for several years, included language that said we encouraged you to reach out to Visit Omaha as a resource, and we're a little bit more specific in the kinds of information you might be able to get from them, and encouraging you to include any of that information.
You've had grants for how many cycles?
A lot.
So what we're looking for every year is how do we improve this? And, you know, the folks who are on the front line, boots on the ground, if there's something that you could suggest to us, I mean, this is a part of what we're doing here today, is we want to have a dialogue about how can we make this better and more effective, easier, and there's always ways to do that. So, I mean, if you have anything off the top of your head right now, fine, but.
I think the last question that I had asked in the last meeting was just, we operate a little differently where we have multiple events throughout the year, and that gets to be, because it's different, just how do we clarify that for the committee to review?
Right. And I think one of the things that we have at everybody's disposal, our staff resources, Catherine Hall, whose contact information, and please pick up the handouts before you leave.
You think you see one person, but there's three.
She's the, thank you, prime member of our staff who deals with this program, does a great job. If you have any questions about anything, and I know that Deb, as well, has resources about promoting. I was just going through your annual report. There's a bunch of stuff in there about what we're building out on promoting events, and so reach out, and let's see if we can get the maximum bang for our buck out of these, and we're happy to help, you know, anybody, new recipients, recipients who've been around for a while, anybody, don't be shy. Pick up the phone.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Vicki Quatze-Barris. I'm with the Empowerment Network, and thankfully, we've been able to be a recipient of the funds. It's for Christmas in the village. I know we just got out of Christmas, but that has allowed us to really expand the event, and last year, we had nearly 10,000 people. Now, it helped that the weather was about 60 degrees, but I just want to personally thank you all for just what you've been able to do in terms of really looking at the applications and really being intentional about where the money is going. I did have a question in terms of, when you bring the awardees, not the awardees, but when you bring the, the recommendation for the organizations to be awarded, are there any questions that the commissioners ask that would lead to having a question on the application because there's so many questions that they may be asking, or there's certain questions that they ask that are the same? So anything that we can do to help clarify any questions, once you bring it to the other commissioners, that would be helpful, I think, as well.
So, and, you know, if you look at the process as, as kind of steps, you fill out the application. You fill out your grant application, and it's got information that, you know, over time has proven helpful in making this determination. These folks then get all of those applications, and they go through Catherine as well, for kind of vetting purposes of, you know, did we miss something here? And I think, you know, you honestly made a mistake. Somebody will reach out to you and say, your address, your phone number, whatever.
Yeah, I would say that actually the questions that come up usually come up in the committee meeting rather than in the commissioner's hearing, because by the time it gets to the commissioners, it's sort of been scrubbed pretty well. But we often, I mean, I can remember in every cycle, there's typically three or four applications where we want some clarification. Maybe it's the date, when's the event really going to happen, or is it, you know, sometimes it straddles the dates of the eligibility, and we have to decide whether we're going to be okay with that or not. So there's other, you know, there's, there's, so we would, and we typically will throw that back to Catherine to reach out and get that information. And I will say that, you know, a lot of times that information is determinative. So if you get an inquiry from the county, you need, you're not going to have a lot of time to respond because the, the, we usually review the applications in like within a week. We have three meetings in kind of a one-week timeframe. So just for everybody out there, if you do get an inquiry from the county about your application, you would do yourselves a favor by answering that promptly.
And I want to thank Catherine, too, because Catherine has been a gem in terms of reaching out to her in response time, so thank you.
That's great. And, you know, at the end of the rainbow, and they're in here as well, is there are seven commissioners. You have a commissioner. If you live in Douglas County, you're in somebody's district. You know, you have a question about this, or, you know, you're finding out about it for the first time. Part of this is a public information outreach. We want people to know that we've got this program and that's ongoing. Reach out to your commissioner and say, hey, I'm thinking about this. What about it? A lot of times you're going to find, we've been to your parade, or we've been to your Christmas celebration, or whatever. I mean, we do that stuff. We're in the community. But if it's happening in my backyard, I'm sensitive to that. And so, you know, you have all of those contacts in the information that you have here today, and use them. Like I said, the hard work is done by Catherine and the committee. By the time they get to us, it's pretty much, these are the recommendations, and I think we have a lot. And I think we have a lot of confidence in these folks. They do a great job. And so, you know, what you want to do is get started on this now. It has a very fortunate kickoff day of St. Patrick's Day, twenty twenty-five. That's just accidental, but it's very, very auspicious date in my opinion. So you've got like a month and a half to get that done. But use all of these resources and don't be shy.
Many of our partners are in the room. Thank you very much.
You got it. Patrick will be there. Concerned citizen.
I suppose saying, again, Catherine has done a great job. It's a big, it's a big order to do all this to keep, not only the commission members in line of the V P C, but the county board members especially.
Patrick, the chief administrator of Douglas County and keeps us all advised.
Chief Comedy Officer. No, I know she's done.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kelly Bello. I'm with Jocelyn Castle and Gardens.
Could you speak up a little?
Jocelyn Castle and Gardens. Hello, hi, everybody. So we received a grant last year for eighty thousand dollars to transform our carriage house from a private tenant space into an activated venue and community center with a cafe coming. And I just wanted to thank the commission because with that added venue, we've been able to almost triple our programming. So now at the castle, we have rotating art exhibits, we do folk concert series, book, local book author talks, all kinds of history lectures, because we like our history at the castle. But yeah, I also want to jump on the Catherine train and say she should get a pass. Real quick, response time to the panicked email. So thank you, Catherine. But yeah, again, we're, we're really grateful for the support and it's had a huge impact in our onsite traffic. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there a cafe open in the carriage house now?
So we are meeting with the kitchen designers in two weeks to spend all the money down for Gillette. But yeah, hopefully when you come back this summer, you can have a cup of poppy or sandwich while you see a concert at the carriage house.
Wow, that's awesome. Can we order the sandwich now?
They'll name one after you.
Yeah.
All right, just going around the room and raise your hand if you have something that you'd like to contribute. Oh, yes, sir.
Yes. Matt Stanball with Larts and Gardens. And we are, you know, grateful and fortunate to have had the support of Douglas County for many years now. Typically on our big winter, spring exhibits, but other projects as well. And everyone at Douglas County is always a pleasure to work with. So I had a question that related to, say, he were to submit a request for an amount that is substantially larger than what we asked for historically. Could you offer any advice or guidance in terms of like preparing, preparing for that? So it's not to come as a big surprise or who would be someone to talk to, you know, mostly visit, visit Omaha and make sure that our, you know, out of town numbers are, you know, as accurate as possible, things like that. But yeah, just, just provide a little guidance as far as.
So I can give a little perspective on that, you know, as actually in the committee. There have been a number of instances throughout the years that I've been participating where, where we'll notice that an organization is typically getting, let's put a number out there, fifty thousand dollars a year. And all of a sudden they're asking for three hundred and fifty thousand. And it's like, well, what's going on? And oftentimes in the narrative, what they'll explain is that this is kind of a one-time thing. Like we've got a capital campaign going or there's this very special project that's gonna hit just this, you know, this time. And then, you know, next year, we plan to kind of go back to where we've been in the past. That's super useful information for the committee. And oftentimes the committee will, you know, will increase the grant level on sort of that one-time basis, knowing that it's not a precedent, necessarily a precedent setting thing, but rather a special project that's happening this time. You know, one example I know is like, is there's a, there's a, the senior, U S Senior Open Golf Tournament, as an example. Doesn't come every year, you know, and so, but when they do, when they do, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna need a slugs, you know. And so, and, and we've also had other, other projects where they're, they're doing a capital campaign or a renovation of a particular area. And, you know, that's gonna happen and it's gonna be done and then they'll go back to the regular operating grant.
Okay.
So certainly.
Good to know, because I've done this long enough. I, I know that year to year, there's usually not a huge jump, you know. Usually like there may be a percent increase, but it's usually nothing major. So.
Right.
And I think, I believe we have a new executive director and I think he's done a little bit of preparation for this in terms of, I don't know who he spoke to specifically. But I think he's done some legwork ahead of time on that. But I just wanted to, yeah, clarify, so.
And, you know, we've dealt with one of our projects like that, particularly like, well, you've got Jocelyn Castle, which is a hundred and something years old. And, you know, we have other local venues that, you know, are old. And if you've got an old house, you know what I'm talking about. Our house is a hundred and two years old and I have to do something.
Here, I mean, here's an example from last year. The Douglas County Historical Society has had a roofing project. And we have a note here that says, including ninety thousand dollar one-time allocation for General Crook House and Archive Center Roof Project. So that's a, that's a good example of, of, of one that just happened last year.
And I'm, I'm Whitney West. I'm the Director of Douglas County Historical Society, so I can actually speak to that. And we were concerned about the jump last year. It's a building, we have two buildings that were both built in a hundred and fifty years ago. And one has gotten to the point where repairs were imminently necessary. I think another thing that helped, and I think Catherine worked with us last year, was to let the committee know that the, what the amount we were asking for versus what the total project cost was going to be. So while percentage-wise, we were awarded a lot more money from the V I F, the total cost of the project, it was still a very miniscule amount of what the whole capital contribution would ultimately be.
Mr. Catherine.
And this kind of brings up another point that you all probably know as grant writers. So I started my career as the first grant writer for the city of Omaha a long time ago. And what you find in grant writing, particularly this type of grant writing, is multiple sources of revenue are attractive to the branding organization. And so if you're getting a grant from us, that's great. And a lot of us in the room here get a grant from the Douglas County Visitor Improvement Fund, period. But if you get grants from multiple organizations, this shows, well, this is a really healthy, almost self-sustaining group. And it encourages us to support that type of activity. And I know that was part of, you know, when you purchase on Douglas County Historical Society. And I'm certain of Dawson, which is a jewel box or a piece of architecture as well. So, you know, think about that. And it also helps in your fundraising is you want to broaden your base as much as you can, just for the health of the organization as we actively make it.
Hey, Jim, we got a couple.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We're gonna go to the screen now. And raise your hand. I see John.
We'll do Emily first.
Emily, okay.
Hi, everyone. Yes, echoing a perpetual gratitude for this wonderful fund. I'm at Fontanel Forest, which our primary operations are in Sarpy County. But as noted in your wonderful intro, we do operate Neil Woods as well. We're able to increase our security for the safety of our visitors and guests this past year. My question is, we, we occasionally have those, those projects, right? The unique project, like a security camera upgrade, but predominantly, you know, just operations of trail maintenance, right? We do that every year. We make sure that our seven miles of trails are wonderful condition for our guests and for our visitors. Is, is that kind of ongoing project something that's welcome? Or is it more so an event or specific project that this fund is targeting?
So I'm gonna defer to Catherine on this parameters question. Catherine?
It's a good question. I think it's, I'm referring back to the sort of the statutory guidance on this. As long as I think it falls within those, the purpose areas that we had on that, it was back on slide five. I think expanding exhibits, planning or developing them, or improving the facilities, a lot of those sort of probably fall under that umbrella. And if you have any questions about any specific ones, I'd be glad to chat with you about it. But I think is if you can explain how it fits under one of those purpose areas, then it's probably a good fit for the fund.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I think right next to, oh, John, go ahead. John?
Yep, appreciate it. Thank you. John Croker, Director of Athletics here for Omaha Public Schools. Certainly, we've come to this committee the last, last four years. And thank you, Commissioner, everyone, for the, the funds that you have helped us to keep state track in, in Omaha and going on our fifty-second year out of Burke Stadium here with the renovations shortly to be complete here. As long as I don't have too many more weather days like this anyway, right? But, oh, the, the two questions, I guess I would ask for some direction from, or that's from you, Commissioner, from staff. One of the things that is somewhat maybe problematic with this system is so many of the events that we talk about are bid-based. And they're contingent upon support and evaluation such as, you know, I'll just give you the, the real and true example of how Douglas County just lost state softball back to Lancaster County this year. And it's not been something maybe where those funds have been available because it is a bid process. It's a, we don't know if we're going to get this event. How can we fund? Or is there some way to maybe create a contingency or if there is a resource for something like that? I guess I would, I would kind of ask. And then I think the other question that I know other bid grantees have maybe asked or we've discussed before is, how do we continue the focus on heads and beds that really funds this program? Such that we don't continue to perpetually lose out to Lancaster, Sarpy County for events? Because it's kind of twofold is, is we don't have this bidding, we don't have this opportunity maybe to go chase these events. And then we turn around and go spend all our money at their venues and in their places and increase their fund and their ability to get more of those events. So curious your thoughts or from the group's thoughts on what we can do to better try to attract those events? Knowing that we just, just as recently as this last year, we were trying to make a run at state basketball, but didn't necessarily have those, those funding partners, maybe like we do with an established event. So I just appreciate any feedback you'd be able to offer. Thank you.
Thanks, John. And as a dad of some O P S alums, I appreciate everything that you do. We've had kids in our family running that state event. It's excellent, well-attended from all over. People come from everywhere to go to the state trials. You know, it's an ongoing process and we can't outbid everybody. And you've seen things come and go, the Olympic swim trials example. And there's a bidding process. It's pure and simple. Big cities, cities our size and bigger, go in and bid. We try to be competitive. We're not gonna win every time. And sometimes we'll win for a couple of years and then somebody will outbid us. But if we can use this to be competitive, and I think we do, we, you know, we'll get our fair share. But we're not gonna win every game. I mean, nobody does. It's just, are we being as competitive as possible? And your input on these kinds of things is, is key from a sports point of view. We've got a sports Hall of Famer here, and I know that Dick has been interested over the years of making that a key component. And if you look on this, you know, we spend significant resources on sporting events. Should we do more? Should we do less? That's a question that we could use your input on. So thank you for this. And G?
Hi, I'm G, or Abby with the Beeman Center for Contemporary Arts. We have a longstanding relationship with Douglas County Visitor Improvement Fund, and we are very grateful for that. And echo again the sentiments of being very grateful for Catherine. One of the questions that I have, and I'm sure many other grant writers in the room have, is with the changes and uncertainty with the current administration, what kind of changes to questions on the application might we see in regards to building diversity, equity, inclusion in Douglas County?
Well, G, you couldn't be more topical. About two hours ago, I got off a plane from the National Association of County Official Conference in Washington, D C, about exactly what you're saying. Short answer, nobody knows. But kind of the advice was buckle up because it doesn't look real rosy from a federal point of view. The good thing about this fund is it's locally generated. We generate our own revenue and we expend our own revenue. So I think from the point of view of what we're talking about here today, we're gonna be on reasonably solid ground barring something like the pandemic again. If people don't go to hotels and pay the tax, then our revenues go down. But, you know, so far, so good, not quit. The federal thing, I'm, I'm not optimistic. So.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
But let me also say that, a personal experience, we, we started a scholarship in nineteen eighty. There was an anti-permeable action banned by the state. And we modified it to meet the needs of the folks in North and South Omaha. There are gonna be additional challenges going forward. We know that. But we're, we're smart enough to have any kind of workaround. Because at the end of the day, it's the people that you're trying to impact. So I just think that we just need to be aware of that, look at the guidelines, rules, the regulation. I don't care if it's federal, state or local, and be creative and make sure you're not, you're not causing problems over here, but still doing the best for the people that you have.
Thank you.
Uh, Morgan?
Hello, I'm Morgan Ormsby. I'm from the Bay. I'll start off by also expressing my gratitude for the committee. We've been lucky enough to be a recipient of funding for a capital project that we're very excited about. I just had a quick question, calling back to the instance of requesting a larger award because of a special project. Could you speak to any recommendations on what a reasonable percentage of a project cost might be? Or any guidelines to help us determine what a reasonable ask amount would be?
You gotta work backwards. Yeah, I think, I've got, I gotta have to give kind of a general answer on this because I don't really, you know, it's, it's very sort of project-specific. But if I, if, if, I, I can remember examples of extremely ambitious projects. I'm talking about projects that are in the, you know, tens of millions or even more than that, you know, where they, where they come to the committee at the very front end of the project. And, and they don't really have all the pieces in place. But the committee is very interested in seeing new attractions being developed and is willing to, and has been willing to put kind of seed money towards those projects. But it, it typically is relatively small in relationship to the total future cost of the project. As the project starts to get underway and there's, there's more clarity and line of sight into the real expenses and the real impact, and whether it's even gonna happen or not, the, the, the committee tends to be more interested in, in putting more money towards that project. So it, it, the momentum of the project itself will help drive the, the enthusiasm of the committee, I think, would be a, would be a way to say that.
Thank you very much.
So we've got about nine minutes left. I think that's all the hands up, unless anybody else on the board? Sorry.
Hello.
Hello.
And Mike Mancuso with Taste of Omaha Festival, and we want to appreciate too your contributions to our event in years. I know we are a five oh one C three and it's a free festival, so it's very important for us to go out. Community partner, lucky enough to have sponsors fluctuates. And of course, COVID did, did some things to our kind of event. And then moving back to the riverfront, which I think is an awesome thing for the city, an awesome venue. But it's a difficult one due to the costs involved. So we went, you know, kind of need to jump up. And so we're gonna try to work better with our grant request and so forth. Because there is that, just like some have said, kind of a potential here. When you have all four categories of your committee that we can basically say we could help with and then do something a little more. When we started, John Blazek, how that was mayor at that time, he was on the committee, big fan of Summer Fest in Wisconsin. And we have a potential with our riverfront, with our city to be the start of summer. But we need that infusion to, to kind of get that together. So we hope to make the grant better, make that event better, but we're proud of what we're doing currently and the sponsorship and your value participation. Is there any ideas for us on, on that kind of thing?
Well, Mike, I love your event. Go to it. I eat too much there. My advice would be just keep doing it with the great. My advice would be just keep doing it with the great food and entertainment.
And I, I think also the, the fact that you have, I mean, your sponsors are meaningful. And, you know, um, your, um, the, the size of the event and the potential for the event is meaningful. Um, you know, the fund is there to help cover, um, like festival-type expenses. You know, are, are often kind of straight down the middle in terms of what, in terms of what the fund, um, is here to do. So, you know, you have, I think you've got an advantage in that sense. And then, you know, there's nothing the matter with, with, um, positioning in the context of a much bigger vision. Um, and, and talking about how you're building towards that. I think that's su- super useful.
And that's what's going to be helpful for us, um, just simply the rent alone with NICA doubling. And so there's a lot of things we would love to do further, but, uh, so it may increase what we're trying to request, so.
And we see that across the board, I mean, insurance costs go up and down, mostly up. Um, security costs, um, you know, stuff changes. Yeah, although the price of eggs is supposed to come down, I'm not sure that everything else is going to come down when eggs come down.
It's, it's very true, entertainment cost, staging cost, all of these things that we deal with, um, on a free festival. If you need to increase security, of course, because the, the focus on the event, so many people coming, um, it, it's increasing. So electricity, although we had a new park and they said they were designed for, uh, increased. And so all of these things continue to increase, um, but so we were very favorable to having help.
I got to say, uh, uh, this isn't just Taste of Omaha, but I do know a lot of the events that we're talking about today. I rarely have ever, I don't think, have seen problems. I mean, you got to have security, but I mean, it's more like bringing the community together than people, you know, coming together. And that's particularly true of the Irish, because if you put two Irish in there, they really.
We have Irish dancing.
Here's a way of bringing everything back, everything back to the Irish.
All right, we're coming up. Yes, you know I'm not Irish. We got one more, yes.
So I don't, I represent a scholarship foundation, my name is Tony Aguilera, the Bariantos Scholarship Foundation. So indirectly I, uh, I'm under the umbrella of Cinco de Mayo, uh, which is basically the, the executive director, Marcus Mora. Not here really requesting funds, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you guys do for the community. It's really encouraging and inspiring to see what you guys do. But why I mention this, but Cinco de Mayo is celebrating one oh five, hundred and five years this next year in twenty twenty-five. So I think it's pretty cool, uh, about the support that you offer that. But why it's important to Bariantos is because we use our platform, the Bariantos Scholarship Foundation, almost as a workforce development solution. Because we share interns and actually do the work, uh, together. So I just want to say it's, it's, it goes beyond actually just the festival. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, I'm glad to hear that because I actually rode a horse in Cinco de Mayo one time. And I got right in front of the reviewing stand and somebody let off a cannon and the horse let off too. But, uh, I was able to turn on Q Street, but sparks were flying and I, I, I made it by the hair of my chinny chin chin. Great parade, great parade. Probably the biggest at Omaha as far as I know.
The numbers at, at the, at the peak was over two hundred thousand, so I just wanted to say.
Okay, very good, twenty thousand. It looked like hundred thousand.
A lot of people. Two hundred, well, over the weekend, I apologize, over the whole weekend.
Oh, two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand over the whole weekend.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's huge. I said a hundred plus, but I wouldn't doubt that at all. I'm sorry, two hundred.
Twenty thousand.
All right, folks, we got five minutes, but I'm not adverse to quitting early. All right, hey, 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 anybody else? Doing ones going twice. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Vince Furong, Public, South Central Omaha. Uh, just some considerations, uh, looking at the budgets of the nonprofits that apply, maybe putting some a million of that five million aside for organization with budgets below a million or seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, or other ways to kind of move the dollars around and encourage new, new organizations. Encourage maybe smaller ones that are trendy now or hot, whatever. Uh, that might be something to, uh, consider to encourage more, maybe more applications, more work for you guys. But, uh, right in the will.
Exactly. Excellent point, excellent point. And I know that Dick has spent a lot of time on his tenure, which is since the committee was founded, uh, on exactly this point.
Yes, because, uh, before we just had a list of folks, uh, and those, those were big and large ones like, uh, like World, I mean, World Series, et cetera. And so we basically went to four areas, but you already saw those. They have different, different, uh, uh, clientele, different interests, et cetera. And when you basically do that, you're able to put them in a category of the small verging to the large, et cetera. So, uh, the example is the ethnic and, uh, and the community. Uh, when we first started, uh, it was like maybe less than five percent. And, uh, uh, in, in the population of North and South Omaha was closer to twenty, twenty-five percent. Uh, you could be able to see now that, uh, that has been significantly jumped up.
I think it's sixteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, percentages.
The, at the, the amount of the fund that went to E C D now versus at the beginning.
Yeah, that's like, so my point is, you, 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 you're, we believe in what you're saying and we're going to keep on trying our best to basically have everybody do it.
Make it public so people are aware.
Right, right. And I think you see that here today, there's some first-time grant award winners here today. And that is exactly what you're saying, they're not huge grants, but they're spread over, you know, different parts of our community, uh, different, uh, ethnic groups in our community and we intentionally want to do that. That's a great point. Thank you. Anybody else? Well, thanks again for coming, Todd. Thank you. Dick, thank you, my colleagues, thank you. Stay well, everybody, we are adjourned.